...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, Dr. Hornig, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No ma'am.
Hearing that there are no adjustments to the agenda, um, could we have a discussion in regards to... I'm sorry? We have discussion for the Cambridge... Um, let's see where we could add it. I guess when we get down to board member items, we could possibly make it a B.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So with that being said, um, can I have a motion to accept the adjustment to the agenda?
Senator.
Can I have a second? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. So at this time, um, minutes in financial reports. Can I have a motion to accept these?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes from the October 11th, 24th, November 7th meetings and the November, uh, 2022 financial report, as well as the local school nutrition report.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, now the minutes of the, um, monthly operating bills.
I need to approve the November 22th operating bills in the amount of seven million, eight thousand, twenty-three dollars.
Okay? Can I have a second? Alright, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. So now we are down to recognition.
Alright, thank you Madam Chair members of the board. Uh, this evening we have a host of recognition and we're gonna start actually, um, with Ms. Page and would like to start with Mr. Poole. I know Ms. Page will have some words as well, but Mr. Poole, we wanted to congratulate you on the, uh, the bittersweet retirement from the Orange Review. For us, might not be for you, but it is for us and, uh, we would like to thank you for your years of service and your dedication, uh, for your journalistic expertise and professionalism and for your unwavering support of the students here in Orange County and the Orange County School Division as a whole. Uh, we will certainly miss your efforts and we thank you for your excellence over the years. So if you would join me, give a Mr. Poole a round of applause.
So, I would consider Jeff Poole a good friend of mine. We've been friends for a long time and we have worked tirelessly together through some tough issues facing our school system and our county. Um, we've always been able to work together. Um, Jeff was always fair in his reporting, I will say. Um, he, uh, never was biased in a way and that was one of the things that I certainly, uh, respected about him early on. He was always very fair and I think at this time, he, as a county, can see what we miss with Jeff not being at the helm anymore, not taking away from anybody that's fair, but I think people realize all the work that he put in and everything that he did and he was the glue that held it together. So he certainly was on that account. So on behalf of Orange County Public Schools, um, this board and myself, thank you Jeff.
Okay, then this evening, we will have, uh, the order, and I know you guys resent this, but we'll review it one more time. We'll have Ms. Burke from Prospect Heights, Dr. Oliver Egger from Locust Grove Elementary School, followed by Ms. Grub from Lightfoot, Mr. Kubik from Unionville, Ms. Lorrie here from Head Start Early Childhood, and then Mr. Johnson from Orange Elementary School, 'cause I know you kinda have a hybrid. You have some staff members to recognize as well, some students. And then Ms. Burke will bring you back up at the end to do your staff recognition. And then after that, we will have, uh, Mr. Lee Finger from Locust Grove Primary School here to do his parental engagement spotlight. Thank you.
Well, good evening everyone. Good evening, Dr. Hornig, Madam Chair, school board members, family and, uh, students. Um, it is just such a pleasure to be here this evening to be able to highlight two, um, amazing lovely women that work for us at Prospect Heights Middle School. And if I could have Elaine Steele to come forward, please? Ms. Steele goes above and beyond for everyone. Here are just a few reasons why she is deserving of this recognition. She always has a kind word of some sort of encouragement for her students and coworkers. She takes the time to get to know her students, attend their activities and communicate with their families. If there is lunch duty that needs covering or an unexpected absence, she is the first person to step in and offer her time. Her students and colleagues are able to succeed because they know how much she loves them. And of course, we thank you for being you, Ms. Steele, and we love you at PHMS. Thank you for going above and beyond. If I could have Kathy Hogston, please come forward. Kathy Hogston is always happy and bubbly and just makes everyone around her smile. She wears many hats this year and is, and is doing it very well. With all of that is on her plate, we at Prospect Heights continue to admire her for all she's doing and her willingness with the next initiative. Kathy goes all the extra miles every day. She does podcasts, she facilitates all of our eighth grade English classes and offers support and encouragement to everyone she sees. Her days are extremely challenging, but you would never know it from her manner. She brightens our day, days and deserves recognition for her amazingness and always going above and beyond.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Dr. Oliver Egger and I'm the principal at Locust Grove Elementary School. And tonight I'd like to recognize Ms. Holly Hanford. If Ms. Hanford, could you come up, please? So Ms. Hanford is a special education teacher, uh, at my school. Um, she runs the self-contained classroom, which serves our students with the most severe and profound disabilities. And I could recognize her for a lot of different reasons, but it's important for me to start with the students. She does an incredible job with the students that she works with. Every single student that comes in that room makes incredible progress. We have students who come in that are wheelchair-bound. We have students that require toileting needs. We have students who are non-verbal and every single one of them stays with her for three years and they become active, independent members of our community. Um, every student knows that they're cared for in her classroom and they all are happy and involved members of our school. She does an amazing job, not only with the students, but with the staff that she works with and all the families. I've never known a parent who hasn't been grateful for the work that she does with their children. And her teammates are here tonight because they love working for her and with her as well. So thank you guys for coming. And also on the chair, just the work she does within the classroom is amazing, but she is a leader among our teachers and our school as well. Everything related to special education, Holly is my right-hand person. She is our lead special educator, she mentors two teachers, and she is our child study chair. And every single one of those duties takes a lot of time, a lot of responsibility and tremendous organization. And she manages it wonderfully and there's never been a single thing that I've gone to for her that I couldn't count on her doing a hundred percent well and in the best interest of our school. So Holly, I thank you for all of your work. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I have several special education members from Lightfoot that I also, um, would like to recognize. So if I could have Ms. Claire Burris, Ms. Kimberly Grant, Ms. Michelle Ratcliffe and Ms. Jordan Hamilton. Ms. Burris is our lead special education teacher at Lightfoot. She defines what it means to be a special education teacher. She is a resource, support and mentor to our students and our staff. She has high expectations for herself and for her students, making sure that they're being taught the curriculum and have access to the curriculum through services and education. She is the model teacher in our school for implementing structured literacy, making sure that students have access to grade level text through scaffolds and supports and that's not an easy task. She's even presented to our staff on how to scaffold, or she's presented, um, next week. She's presenting to our staff on how to scaffold grade level reading text and raise the expectation while teaching what our students read. She teaches them academic vocabulary and how to use graphic organizers and manipulatives in math. She teaches her students to love reading, writing and math. She models to them how to be good citizens. Ms. Burris is a third-year teacher, is also a mentor to Ms. Kimberly Grant, who I'd also like to recognize. Ms. Grant is an experienced special education teacher who is joining us at Unionville and Lightfoot this year. While she manages a caseload of students at Unionville, and Ms. Kubik can tell you what a phenomenal job she does there, she also manages our third grade reading caseload at Lightfoot. Each day in the afternoon, she drives up to Lightfoot with a positive attitude and also high expectations for herself and for our students. Ms. Grant is organized, she builds strong relationships with our students and also has really high expectations. And we're very thankful that she's joined us at another lovely Unionville, um, at U K Rock. Ms. Burris also works closely with her instructional assistants, um, to make sure that they get their accommodations and services. And we could not do it without this team. They're, they're incredible and they are, they are teachers. First, Ms. Ratcliffe. She's a veteran instructional assistant at Lightfoot. She is highly effective at instruction and using, you can walk into a classroom and seeing her using manipulatives for math and teaching Lexia lessons, just like a teacher. She is very positive and always willing to help with the duties and coverage as needed. She builds strong relationships with her students and teaches, and the teachers that she works with. Ms. Hamilton just joined us this year at Lightfoot and we are so excited to have her. She works, stays positive and helps whenever needed for coverage. She steps up to the front every day and asks for my help in helping make sure of all the hardest things, making sure that students are level zero in the hallways or in classes. It's not an easy task. She has quickly learned the instruction for math and for reading and we are very appreciative that she's joined us at Lightfoot. So together, looking at this team, they work together with administration, teachers and parents to make sure that our students receive the best services and education that we can offer. So congratulations to the Lightfoot Special Education.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Amy Cerveng. I'm the principal at Unionville Elementary. And tonight I would like to recognize the instructional assistants that work at Unionville. So if Ms. Walsh, Mrs. Kazura, Mrs. Consti and Mrs. Squire, who are ten on top, I'd like to first, um, introduce them as a group and then look through them individually, what their strengths are and why I'm so thankful for them. Um, they play an integral role in the operations of the school and in the lives of all of our students and our staff members. They greet students as they arrive each morning, they cover all of our lunch shifts, they assist with dismissal and cover classrooms whenever needed. Within the past year, they have attended professional development focusing on Lexia, box of facts and structured literacy. And they do all of these things with a smile on their face every day. And first I would like to talk about Mrs. Walsh. She is our library instructional assistant. She works both at Unionville and at Lightfoot. She builds great relationships with the students, she encourages a love for reading. She's also very happy and I don't know what I would do without her helping me decorate special occasions. Thank you, Mrs. Walsh. Mrs. Kazura is our special education instructional assistant. As Ms. Grub just said, Ms. Grant works at both of our schools and Ms. Kazura is her instructional assistant. She easily builds caring and trusting relationships with her students as well as their parents and the teachers that she works with. She is flexible and accommodates for most challenging of our tasks. Thank you, Mrs. Kazura. And Mrs. Consti, she is our math tutor. She joined the Unionville family this school year but has quickly become a staple in our school. She has a passion for teaching and is a true go-getter. She will be finishing her degree this summer and hopefully moving into a teaching position at Unionville. Mrs. Squire is our technology instructional assistant. We also share her with Lightfoot. Students enjoy and, enjoy attending her, her connect class and learning about all of the new technologies. She is currently helping with the hour of code and will be heading our robotics league later this month. So I thank each and every one of you for your dedication and your commitment to the students at Unionville.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board and Dr. Hornig. Um, my name is Heidi Lorrie and I am supervisor of early childhood in Orange County. So tonight we're, um, we have three special members of our Head Start and BPI families that we would like to recognize. So first I'd like to call Ms. Lucille Jones. I'm gonna have my assistant bring over a special award for Ms. Jones. Ms. Jones started with us at Head Start, um, thirteen years ago. She started as a shopper for our program because we had to fix meals for our, um, young children, breakfast, lunches and snacks. So she started as a shopper and delivered quite a few meals. She also, since I've been on, has done quite a, a helpful job, I would say, a supportive job of childcare in the evenings for us. She's worked with our program for thirteen years and we really appreciate everything you have done for us, Ms. Jones. And we miss you, so anytime you wanna come back, you can come on back. Our next, uh, extended family staff member would be Ms. Pat Brock. Ms. Pat is still working with our program in Head Start. As a matter of fact, she's a long-term sub right now in one of our early childcare rooms. So, uh, she's worked with us for thirteen years. Ms. Pat worked in childcare when we had childcare here at the Taylor Center and she has subbed all over, uh, probably at every center we have, Ms. Pat, is that correct? And she is still going strong. So her, her trophy over there says, "Still going strong." And so, Ms. Pat, thank you for coming in every day. She is so reliable and dependable and she is ready to work and she tells me every day, "I love these children." So thank you, Ms. Pat. And last but not least, I would like to bring up Ms. Mary Richardson. Ms. Mary, as we call her fondly, has worked for Head Start for forty-three years. And Ms. Mary's still working with us in Head Start. I want to tell you, Ms. Mary started with us in nineteen seventy-nine. She first helped get the Head Start program off the ground. Head Start was in a bus. Uh, the classroom was in a bus and they drove around town and had class with children. So Ms. Mary started there. And from then, she went, um, on to become a Head Start teacher, is that right, Ms. Mary? Let me make sure I get it right. Then she became a family advocate for our families. And then from there, she was a family advocate supervisor for a little over twenty years. And Ms. Mary's still subs with us today. So, thank you so much, Ms. Mary. I'm gonna take my picture with Ms. Mary, but, um, for our Head Start family, we can exit and go out to the cafeteria when we're done, okay?
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Warrior Johnson. I'm the assistant principal at Orange Elementary School. Uh, we kinda have a hybrid recognition today. We're going to recognize three staff members, um, and also our students. So the three staff members that we would like to recognize is Ms. Johnson, Ms. Dornell and Ms. Forman. We are recognizing these staff members for their contributions to Cheetah Nation News. During the summer, uh, we had some crazy ideas as we prepared for the start of the school year, but we really wanted to showcase what our students would do outside of the classroom. And so I guess they got tired of hearing about the news every morning. So we thought that we should have the students create the news and the announcements for every channel. So Ms. Dornell, who is our TTRT, uh, came up with the idea to use Google and a script. Ms. Johnson had created the backdrop and all the props, but also supported Ms. Dornell with the use of technology. And then Ms. Forman has her candy sphere. She said, "We're gonna do this and we're gonna get it done and this is how it's gonna be done." And so, like any educator, we wouldn't be here unless it was for our students and because of our students. So we had started a process to, uh, receive applications and each student sitting in front of you submitted their application along with a video response and they were voted, um, by a panel to be the first student-led news at OES. What makes it more worthwhile is they're like, "Mr. Johnson, you nervous?" I'm like, "Yeah, I like speaking in front of people." Like, "You're, you're a press boss." Like, "No, no, no, I just like speaking in front of people." They came with the same attitude. They were nervous at the beginning of the school year, but through this first semester, they have improved so much and you would think they've been doing this for years. It's great to see. I think of one student in particular who had overcome some obstacles with anxiety and they have flourished so much this year that it has been amazing to see them grow and contribute each and every day. So as I say these things, please give them a round of applause. Tenlee Belger. Sarah Grace Blade. McKenna Deal. Ashton Schumay. Emily Webb. Gabriel Steenber.
Good morning, Orange Elementary Cheetahs. Welcome to Cheetah Nation News. Today is Thursday, November thirtieth. It is also World Soil Day. It is a great day to recognize the importance of healthy soil.
If you hope you have a great day, not just a good day, please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
With liberty and justice for all. Now please pause for a moment of silence.
Thank you. Our lunch choices for today are a cheeseburger or a salad sandwich.
Today's weather is mostly cloudy with showers. We are looking at a high of forty-nine degrees and a very chilly low of forty-four degrees.
Today's superstar staff member is Ms. McGee. Why ask why Ms. McGee is the best? Peggy Nice says, "Because she comes from our community and understands the students and staff members."
Today, I'm Ted and I am in control of starting, stopping, and moving and controlling the script.
Announcements. Fourth and fifth grade students, listen carefully. Are you trustworthy, responsible, and a team player that you may want to consider becoming part of the safety patrol team for the second semester?
Announcement. Please remember to bring non-perishable food donations for the Orange County Food Bank. We will place them around our giving tree in the lobby.
Would like to wish a happy birthday to Rachel Legrum, Melanie Shiflett, and Lauren Oates.
The following students celebrated their birthdays over the weekend. Matt Johnson and Travis Garn.
Today's Lexia superstars are Christie Lee, Wendy Briggs, Jenny Potter, and Beth Racer.
Today's star students are Suzanne Gerald, Allison Lerman, Kelly Ficks, and Tracy Hall.
Up next, Cheetah Joke of the Day. Hey, Cheetahs, what kind of photos do elves take?
I don't know, Vera. What kind of photos do elves take?
Elfies!
Thank you for tuning in to Cheetah Nation News. I am Sarah Grace. Remember, in everything that you say, think, and do, be safe, be respectful, and be responsible.
Have a great day, Cheetahs!
I can tell you, as a principal of a middle school and we have broadcasts as well, we're going to have some really well-trained broadcasters. There's a couple of fifth graders there. So it is also my pleasure this evening to be able to recognize some really outstanding students. I have Ms. Sarah Emory Miller. She could please come forward. Amelia Barker, she could please come forward. And Tammy Crawford, who's not here this evening, but I wish she was. But I have a few words to say about each of these students. Our staff at Prospect Heights Middle School really chooses who our Student of the Month is. And also, just because they're just amazing students. They help out at all kinds of events. But let me tell you a little bit about Sarah. Sarah's teachers say that she can consistently give a great attitude, great effort, and helps make the classroom just a positive space. Sarah goes above and beyond by always bringing a focused and positive attitude to the classroom. She comes prepared. And she especially does this inquire, who she is actually adored by her teacher. And her friendliness makes the day just go great. She's respectful, intelligent, and just so deserving of this recognition. So Sarah, congratulations. Ms. Amelia, her teachers say that she always tries her absolute best in class. If she doesn't understand a concept, she will work hard to problem solve. And once she has it down, she helps her classmates. That's the type of student that she is. Amelia is always kind and is always the first to offer her supplies and pencils to other students who forget theirs. At heart, Amelia is a teacher. And so, and she's a teacher in training, definitely. And whenever someone misses class, she has offered her notes and is always friendly. Lights up everyone's day and is so deserving of this recognition as well. So, congratulations, Amelia. And of course, Ms. Tammy Crawford. We're here to recognize her this evening for her kindness and her helpfulness. On many occasions, Tammy has helped out, especially with spills and messes in the cafeteria and in the classroom. And even when the mess is not hers, she's just that type of person. In addition, Tammy has also reached out to befriend other students in the eighth grade that she sees being left down or sitting alone at lunch. And so, her leadership and her willingness to volunteer is why she's so deserving of this recognition this evening. I wish she could be here with us, but I will catch up with her tomorrow. So, congratulations, ladies.
Good evening. My name is Lee Finger. I'm the Principal of Locust Grove Primary School. And for an evening to share more about family engagement at Locust Grove Primary, I think the presentations from today is a beautiful picture as well of the ways that Orange County whole engages with their families. So, Madam Chair, School Board, Dr. Hornet, good evening. It's my pleasure to spend some time this evening to share with you ways that Locust Grove Primary School engages with our families. You can move on to the next slide. Family engagement is essential to our school mission. It is important, as educators, we recognize our work is not done in isolation. The work must be done in partnership with our families. Some highlights from our mission include, first and foremost, creating a safe and caring environment, ensuring that students are engaging in high-quality instruction. We want to instill a love for lifelong learning in our students. And in everything that we do, we want to work to promote good character and productive citizenship. Our students come to Locust Grove Primary School with the collective experiences and backgrounds of their first few years, their most impressionable years. Our parents serve as the first and foremost expert of their child. Our students come to us with their parents having served as their child's first teacher. We have the great responsibility and privilege of partnering with our families who place great trust in the school to educate and engage our students. So, it's important to foster and support an environment that invites parents and families to engage with our schools. You can move on to...oh, you already did. Let's start with communication. Regular weekly communication is proactive and consistent. It is intended to inform families about happenings in the life of the school and to provide food for thought on how families can support their child's academic development. This is done through the weekly Cardinal Connection Principal Newsletter and frequent social media posts. We also take advantage of our school messenger service to share this information through a weekly phone call and email messages to our families. We also want to foster a pipeline of two-way communication between the school and family. The following few slides will highlight avenues for scheduled and formal communications as well as opportunities for our families to engage in natural and incidental connections with the schools. Let's explore additional ways our families can engage with their child's education. We have larger forums intended to disseminate information and to share with families the school's responsibilities and expectations and to welcome families into the school environment through events like Open House and Back to School Night. We invite families to volunteer and support academic and programmatic works in the school. We have received seventy-nine volunteer applications and we have had volunteers support field trips, the work of the teacher within the classroom, and special events. We are also working with the Orange County Office on Youth to revive the Project Excel tutoring program in which high school and community tutors work with our Cardinal students. Larger-scale events such as community art shows, spirit nights arranged with local businesses provide opportunities for students, staff, and families to engage with one another. We have a second-grade musical tomorrow evening that I can assure you will be a standing-room-only event. So let's look at some more formal opportunities to support individual students. Each teacher works to establish a parent-teacher conference with each family twice a year. Our Virginia-tiered system of supports provides the pathways for the school and families to proactively engage in multidisciplinary teams in response to academic behavior and attendance needs. And report cards, of course, also provide an opportunity to both share information and invite families to work with our schools. The partnership that we have with our PTA provides pathways for the school and our families to engage. I'm very proud to share that we currently have a hundred and forty-nine...so a hundred and forty-nine? We have a goal of a hundred and fifty. We're one away, and I know we're going to make it this year. We have a hundred and forty-nine in our PTA. And we've been recognized with the 2020-2022 PTA School of Excellence designation. We have enrolled in the process to be considered once again for the 2022-24 designation. And the graphic up here illustrates the timeline and the steps that must be taken to engage our families in this process. I would like to introduce you to someone very important to our school, Ms. Brooke Martin. Ms. Martin is a parent of one of our LGPS students and also serves as our PTA president.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chairperson and Board Members, Dr. Hornet. Thank you, Mr. Finger, for this opportunity. I am the PTA President at Locust Grove Primary School for the 2022-23 school year. As PTA President, my mission has been to engage our families...am I not closing them? And build a strong sense of community. Our recent family game night was a direct reflection of the progress we were making. We were just shy of a hundred in attendance. And the smiles seen on the kids' faces make the long hours that we put in worth it. Another goal has been to have open communication with all of our families regardless of their spoken language. We're offering in-person, bimonthly meetings this year with a virtual option. Before we conclude each of our meetings, we open the floor to questions, concerns, feedback. And I have made it very clear, as well as the board, that if anyone would prefer to discuss matters privately, that Mr. Finger and I are always available. And then lastly, we are committed to building up a healthy and productive PTA by providing partnerships between families and the school. Thank you.
I would like to summarize with a final slide of pictures. As you can see from the graphic, our students are at the center of everything that we do. The pictures on the outside represent our families, community members, and the team of staff members that work to keep our students at the center of our work. The planning and intentionality of engaging our families to work in partnership for the sake of our students is important. The support with which we surround our students in partnership with our families will yield good things for our students and families. I hope that today's presentation demonstrates the value that we place to support parent and family engagement at LGPS. Thank you to the board, our staff, and our families for everything that you do for our students. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. And that is all for recognitions and spotlight this evening.
Thank you. So, at this time, I think it is time for public hearings in my...alright? So, at this time, I will open public comment for the school division's operating budget. And Mrs. Byram, do we have anyone signed up?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Last call. Hearing that no one has signed up to speak for the school division operating budget, I will declare the budget comment session closed. And now, public comment concerning the SO3 money, I will open. And Mrs. Byram, is there anyone signed up to speak against or for the SO3 funds?
No, no one has signed up for SO3.
Alright. Hearing that no one has signed up for this, I will declare that public comment closed. And for general public comment, I will open. And say, Mrs. Byram, has anyone signed up for general public comment?
Yes, ma'am. We have one speaker, Mr. Gary McFadden.
Thank you. I always enjoy those recognitions. Dr. Hornet and School Board Members, first I would like to thank Mr. Hopkins, who's not here tonight, for his thoughtful reply to the questions posed in my email sent to the School Board Members dated November tenth. I was a little disappointed that both Ms. Page and Mr. Jones did not respond to the merits or demerits of Ms. Quintero's resolution on parental notification. How is it possible for the voting public to evaluate the performance of School Board candidates who remain silent with respect to providing the reasons for their support or lack of for the various issues that require their action and support? To his credit, Mr. Hopkins did respond. In his response, he wrote, emphasis added, "I support full disclosure to parents. We already know how Ms. Quintero and Anderson side on this important matter. I think I speak for the majority of the community when we seek to reconcile the votes of Ms. Page and Mr. Jones and the context of their positions on the topic." In terms of the board's duty to the Orange County Public School System, but also with an eye towards risk management, I want to share a news article with you. In Northern California, Chloe Cole was prescribed puberty blockers, cross-sex hormones, and had her breasts removed when she was fifteen. She now deeply regrets her decision and is suing the various groups that facilitated the gender transition she underwent as a minor. Cole stated, "The adults who were supposed to take care and guide me as a child failed to do so and they will take responsibility for it. My parents were sold alive." take responsibility for it. My parents were sold alive, just like I was." In my correspondence with Jim Hopkins, there was strong agreement between us on the following point. The underlying question with respect to many matters hinged on the right of a parent to know what is going on with their child. This means we inform parents before treating their children as transgender students. Jim went further on to caution, "There is no reason to get our school system mixed up in lawsuits. That would be a waste of taxpayer dollars." I thank Mr. Hopkins for clearly responding to my questions. Please know that I would continue to send follow-up emails to the others in hopes that they may eventually explain the basis for their positions. The voting public deserves to understand where each member of the school board stands with respect to parental notification and what actions each member will take in support of their position. Thank you.
Ms. Byram, has anyone else signed up?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Hearing that no one else has signed up, I would declare public comment closed. Moving on, superintendent's report and recommendations.
Yes, ma'am. Members of the board, we'll have Ms. Dawson come forward to present the pupil teacher ratio report for first semester. Correct, Ms. Dawson?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Horneck, members of the board. As required by the Code of Virginia, we must present the pupil teacher ratio report before December 31st of the year. So I have to put together the information, and as Dr. Horneck said, the elementary and middle schools reflect the school year, the entire year, and the high school reflects the first semester when we're looking at the numbers. So what I've done here is I've broken it down by school and then, of course, by grade level. And I won't go through all of these, but I'll just use Locust Grove Primary as an example. So in kindergarten, we are at a ratio of 23 students to one teacher, 20 to one in first grade and 20 to one in second grade. If you go all the way over to the far right of the page, you'll see SOQ. This is what the SOQs say we have to have. So you have to have 20, no more than 24 to one in grades kindergarten through third grade. So we are meeting the ratios there. If you go down to the bottom where it says core personnel, this is the core teachers in those grade levels. So we have 21 teachers in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade at Locust Grove Primary School. And if we take the staff, we are at a ratio of 21 to one, and we have 442 students enrolled as of September 30th. So that's what this is based on. For the middle schools and the high school, those are done a little bit differently. We have to do those by sections. So you take the total number of sections and the total number of students in those sections, and that gives you your ratio. So at Prospect Heights, for example, in English, we are at an average of 18 to one, math 17 to one, science 18 to one, and social studies 18 to one. And in those four core areas, we have 24 staff members. That gives us a ratio of 18 to one. There's 103 sections taught and 460 students enrolled in those classes. And at the high school, it's the same calculation. It's the number of sections and the students in those sections. And again, this is first semester at the high school because second semester, the schedule could change based on the student's needs. So we always just base that on the first semester. Any questions? Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson. All right, thank you, Madam Chair. That's all for this evening. For reports and recommendations.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Quinter, Head Start campers report?
Madam Chair, so we are excited to announce that we have three new parents that joined the policy council. We voted a new president, Tiffany Davidson, and Cassie Marie Schrader is voted in as vice president. They're, and I'm sure the whole community realizes this, but RSV and the flu seem to be a little bit more severe this year than the past. So that's brought on some staffing challenges, but they're working through that. The Frog Street curriculum seems to be a good program. Staff's sticking to it. They completed a fall reading night, fall fun day. December, they're looking for volunteers for reading. So culturally sound books in the classrooms, holidays around the world is kind of the theme. So the school members, Dr. Horneck, other community members are invited to reach out to the Head Start programs and volunteer for those. Taylor Center is doing a gingerbread house on December 19th, about 9:30. We are also welcome to attend these. Enrollment VPI is filled, 60 out of 60 slots. Early Head Start is filled. For the home-based early Head Start, there is one opening still, and there are 12 openings for Head Start. We have a lot of applications, but most, all of them are over income. And unfortunately, with the federal program, they do not allow us to go above that. So we're still looking for various means to re-advertise. And so if you know any parents that would be able to fit in the Head Start program, they're still opening, so they're more than happy to work with you to get your student involved. A new playground's going to be going in Locust Grove Campus. That was with Corona money. The Taylor Center has new five-foot fencing. It should be completed by November 21st, so I'm assuming that has been updated. And there's also a new event that they're going to advertise and attract Mary Washington students, and that was well-attended. So our next meeting is December 19th, and that is it.
Thank you, Ms. Quinter. And I think Ms. Anderson had something that she wanted to bring up?
Yes, I just had a couple of questions in regards to the strategic services provided by Cambridge. The presentation that we saw last week, or I'm sorry, the 28th. I'm just curious as to, have we made the decision that we are going with them ultimately?
I think so. I think it was a general consensus that we worked with them, yes.
Okay, because I don't remember taking a vote on it.
No, we didn't vote.
Okay. Can I ask why?
Because I think that the night that we had the discussion, it was pretty, everybody was on board with it, so...
I believe that we do need to add a vote as far as if we're going to use them or not. And I feel that we should have at least one other option at least to compare to before we make that final decision.
Well, I think it's my belief that we've already engaged with them at this point, so, and I'm comfortable with.
What is the amount that we're paying?
I think it's to be brought, it is to be broken down in three installments. So as the first installment that they do, they will be paid. Second installment, I think the sum probably is around $21,000.
Total or the first installment?
Total.
And what is the long-term investment with them? Is there any additional fees that would come after we implement their plans?
I don't think so, no.
And the only thing, the other thing that I still believe that we should have had a formal vote on them, but I would also like to add that we, that all five board members should be included in the strategic planning committee, not just two, as recommended by the Cambridge Strategic Committee. So if that's something that we can arrange with them?
No, that's not, I don't think that's how they operate. And just my way of thinking and just chatting a little bit with Mike, I think it would be great if a veteran board member and a new board member sat on that committee. And I think Mike had expressed interest in being the veteran board member, so...
I still don't understand, even though we had the presentation, I don't understand why we didn't do a formal vote.
Because it was under, everyone was under general consensus that night. Nobody had any real objections.
Right, but it was a presentation, and it wasn't a formal invite that is...
And it was my belief that an email was sent out to voice your concerns of your objections afterwards.
To voice our objections afterwards? I don't recall receiving, I recall receiving an email at 6:28 on the day of the meeting, but I don't recall receiving anything after to voice our concerns.
To share your concerns that whether you objected or not?
That was the email?
Did you send out a weekly update that included anyone's thoughts on...
Yes, ma'am. I can't remember exactly, but it said, yes, we did. Explain a little bit of why I would like to work with them. Explain a little bit about Dr. Harris.
I think one thing that was added too was the, while the panel would be two board members, ultimately nothing would ever be activated or put into place unless it was a unanimous vote. Once that was completed.
Right, but it's unanimous based off of the entire community, not necessarily just the two board members.
Right. So once that work and product was done, it would be...
And well, back to the board, yes.
The whole board didn't vote for that decision, then what would happen?
Yes.
That's the presentation I saw.
I agree. That's the presentation that I saw here. I just wasn't aware that this was already implemented and that we didn't have an actual vote.
Yeah, I will say $20,000 is a lot to invest in, especially if, you know, if it ends up in front of the board and the board isn't unanimous. I guess I miss that part of the board having to be unanimous with the strategic plan as well.
Well, it won't move forward unless, because it's broken down in components, like they said, and the work is done, will be brought back to the board. And if there's nothing that the board likes or agrees on, it goes back to the committees to be reworked.
And also the installment portion of it was, is if you're in that first phase and it's not going to work, then that's probably going to be, we're cutting bait on it, and that's going to be the end of it. That's what I understood too.
Well, I don't see any emails coming in regards to it to me personally, so, or to me being in agreement with the text. If I didn't receive it, I apologize, but at the same time, I think we should have had a vote. The more information that I get from what I'm researching on this particular company, there's a lot of questions that come about because the strategic plans that I've seen over the multiple companies or other school districts that they have performed, and they seem to be very word-for-word in some cases, very similar in what the strategic plans are. You know, a couple of them, I felt that, you know, we're not a huge county and that some of the things that they were implementing into their strategic plans. And I get that it's a process and that we go through it step-by-step, but I just felt that another option would have been preferred as far as having options to look at one versus the other, versus going ahead and forging forward.
Oh, no, I think we communicated prior to that we wanted to move forward in our strategic planning. And I have had my own jumps into this company, and they will facilitate a good output. And like I said, he was very clear that everybody would be on board, that everybody would be in agreement, no matter how long it took. And...
Yes, thank you for the support of Superintendent. It's his administration.
I agree with him.
And we're a few requests that I want to support.
I understand that, and I would support him, but I think that we should have been given at least another option to look at to compare to.
Wait, moving on. We have closed session. Congratulations, please, Ms. Chelsea.
Pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following: Discussion of Personnel or the Performance of a Division Employee as Authorized by Section 2.2-3711A 1 of the Code of Virginia for Resignation, Termination, Transfer, Employment, Salary Adjustment, and Retirement of Employees.
Thank you. Can we have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. We're in closed session.
The Board will reconvene in open session, whereas the Orange County School Board has convened a closed meeting session on the state pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote. And in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Orange County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Can we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Byram?
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Ms. Quinter?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the court certified the vote as follows. For yes votes, no-no votes, with whom a member acts.
Thank you. Disposition, personnel actions. Dr. Horneck, does this come with recommendations?
Yes, ma'am. We'd ask that the board approve the personnel actions as presented in closed session, please.
Thank you. Question, please?
I move to accept the recommended approval of the personal agenda to include retirement, resignation, and employment of staff and coaching appointment.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Anything else, guys? All right, hearing that, I will adjourn this meeting.